Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order at 6:06 PM. And if everybody could please stand and join in this pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the five of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
The first item is Sarah and Company's CPAs LLP will present the 2324 external audit report. May I have a motion? So moved. And may I have a second? Thank you. You're all good to go.
Thank you for allowing me to present today. We want, once again, thank the board for giving us the opportunity to to audit the district. Once again, we've had many, many years of doing this, and this isn't something that I ever want to stop doing, especially for this district. Before you, you have the our board package, and we have the 2324 audit. And the top document is what I'll briefly discuss with you, which is the executive summary. So if you turn to page 2 of the executive summary. For the current year, we audited the, we presented reports on the financial statements and supplemental information, on internal control or financial reporting and compliance in accordance with GAS, and on the audit report and compliance and internal control for each major program required by even from guidance, as the district did spend over $750,000. For all three reports, we did give the district a clean unmodified opinion, which is the highest level opinion that we could give for any of our audits. Page three goes over a couple other letters that we have given to the districts, such as the mandatory cover letter, of which we had no issues or concerns, the independent audit report on extraclassement activities, of which we had no findings, and also get an unmodified opinion, and the mandatory cover letter. We did have a couple of issues noted there that we will be looking at in the next year to see how how well those will result for the district. Page four goes over our communication. Once again, we had no comments of concern to be reported to the district with any of the items listed, such as discrimination with management or management representation. And looking at pages five and six, let's go briefly over the government of wide statements or the government of wide statements on for the year 2024. The district spent, had revenues of about $49.6 million. On the other hand, it had expenses overall about $39.6 million for the current year. Now, this, as I said, it's just for the current statements overall. If we start looking at page 70, this really gets into your general funds itself, which is your main operating fund. So for the current year, you've had assets of $14.3 million, about $1.76 million, higher than where they were last year. Most of that come in in cash. Cash was around $10.4 million. For liabilities, your liabilities only contributed to about $2.4 million for about $70,000 decrease over the prior year. Looking at your fund balance, your fund balance ended the year at $11.8 million. Most of that would about $8 million come in, come in in form of your restricted fund balance for all your reserves, your capital reserve, your ERS, TRS, things like that. Signed, which includes the encumbrances and amounts assigned for the subsequent year's budget, came in at about $1.9 million. And then your residual fund balance here on the signed fund balance came in at about $1.8 million, which is around $200,000 higher than prior year. Your revenues just for the general, just for general fund came in at $41.6 million, about $2.4 million higher than it was last year. Mostly you got a little more estate sources compared to what you had in the prior year. Expenses, on the other hand, did also increase, but by more. You increased your expenses by about $1 billion over prior year. A lot of that was in the instruction line item, where we saw some increases for both these type expenses and the regular salary increases and things like that. And also in your employee benefits for health insurance, retiree expenses. So those also did increase over the prior year as well. Bottom page nine goes briefly into the other funds, such as your capital projects. That one I will point out specifically, that one from $6.4 million up to $16.8 million. As you're continuing with your $27.7 million capital projects, you are spending a lot of money. So it'll be seen if that stays around the same or kind of tapers off in the next couple of years as you're finishing up on some of those projects. Page 10 breaks down your your fund balances a little bit more. So I'll point you to the middle where those restricted fund balances are. So what you saw in total was you added about $780,000 in funding to all of the capital, all of the reserves. And then you gained an initial of $265,000 in interest for those reserves. So that's how we came from that $6.9 up to that $8 million. Most of that, once again, was in your capital reserve, which is about $2.6 million. And then the next highest was your ERS reserve, which was about $2.5 million. That reserve for your teacher's retirement contribution was says about $1.1 million. So the rule is you are allowed to fund for about 2% of your teacher's salaries every year, up to about 10%. So I think we'll have to start taking a look. I think we've been funding for about five years at this point. So you may hit that, be close to that 10% threshold at this point. So that one may be tapered off in how much you're adding on a yearly basis. And then, as we talked about, your appropriate for next year's budget was $1 million, and encumbrances was $869,000. You know, another thing that I'll mention is on the page 11 is one thing we'll always look at is compliance with law 1318 when it comes to your 4% balance. And you're saying states that all districts must have less than 4% of the of the unassigned fund balance of the subsequent years budget. Your water approved budget for the next year was $46.5 million. And your maximum that you were allowed was 1.85. You came in at 1.84, so at about 3.97%. So you were just under that limit of how much you were allowed to have in your own side. Last thing I'll mention is if you go to the last page, it's just some accounting standards for the future. One kind of standard that I did speak about with the audit committee had to do with the GASB 101 that we'll be taking a look at next year and how that's going to impact the districts for '24, '25, and everything that will have to do with Zach and with BT in terms of trying to figure out the best way to determine the form of either an individual employee standpoint or a collective group of employees standpoint as to how to correctly estimate the liability for compensation that happens going forward. But that is the biggest thing that we'll take a look at. And then in the next couple of years, we'll have a few other standards that will really impact the district as much as it affects us and how we'll present the numbers to you on a yearly basis. Well, with that, I'm going to, are there any questions where the numbers as we have presented for them or any of the information that I presented?
Thank you. All those in favor of accepting the proof of the financial report?
Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
We just wanted to keep them here. We didn't want to let you go to the daughter soccer game.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Do we have the need for an executive session? Okay. We are going to go into executive session at 6:15 for discussion on. May I have a motion? So thank you, Chris, and a second? Is that you, Aubrey? Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? This is the new one, correct? Stay safe. That's not stable. Thank you. Okay, we are going to reconvene and open session at 6:39. Correspondence? There is none. That brings us to policy discussion regarding the code of conduct.
I need to make a quick presentation.
Okay. Do you want to do that?
Do we now?
Sure. Yeah? I'll just. We need a motion. But I have a motion to move up new business item M to this portion in the meeting. So moved. Thank you, Chris. And a second? Thank you, Molly. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Do the motions after we hear the discussion, since the motions are separate for each student. So Murphy is up to you.
Thank you. These young ladies just came off the playing field, so it would be very helpful. Thank you to have them present, and then we can get them home and have dinner, seeing that they've been at school all day. So today's presentation is for the athletic placement process, which is a New York State regulation that also is supported by a Board of Education policy. And the Board of Education policy at any point is if they're in seventh grade, being requested to move to varsity, they have to present to the board. So prior to that, the process works as a coach recommends a student athlete to be placed at the higher level, junior varsity or varsity. From there, the selective classification advanced placement committee gathers together, which is the principal, is the guidance counselor, it's the nurse, it's the physical education teacher, and myself with guidance, and we review social, emotional, and academic performance, which include their grades, their attendance, their behavior, their athleticism. If the committee passes them to move on, then they see the school medical director for a health examination. From the health examination, if that's clear, then they take a fitness test. The fitness test is performed with any athlete that's being moved up under the direction of my supervision. And then from there, if they pass that, then they get a three-day tryout on the team that they are desiring. So currently, the two young ladies are on the junior varsity team, and the coaches have requested to move to varsity. So the coaches will present briefly about their success currently at the JV level and why they're requesting to move them to the varsity. Then the athlete will share what they enjoy about field hockey, their strengths in the sport, why that's a positive choice, and how they can stay on top of their academics. And then the parents can add anything that they would like to share in regards to keeping their student athlete academically, socially, and emotionally eligible. So if the coaches want to quickly present on each student athlete.
So Grace Lewis, seventh grader. She has two goals and one assist on the year. She plays more of a defensive role for the JV team. So looking at stats, it really doesn't determine the success of our athletes. I mean, they all pretty much get set. So that's something that we really strive for in our program. So is the coachability, is the work ethic that she has, as well as attitude and respect. And being a good teammate, and Brittany's going to fall right into this. She has seven goals and six assists. She plays on the offensive end, so these two work very well together. And they have a lot of connection on the field. And when we practice, our JV and varsity practice together. So we are typically all one unit when we are practicing. So this isn't something that's going to be new to them, what they're doing, because they're already doing it every single day. But the excitement, passion that they have in the sport, that's that's the drive. And to be part of our postseason, that's giving them an experience that's really beyond just our community at this point. There are people that follow us across the state and out of our state that are not following our program just because they like the family atmosphere that we have, the camaraderie that's in our team and what we do with our kids. So I think that's important to include them in that aspect of our program as well. Thank you.
So Grace, if you wouldn't mind, if I may stand up there, would you? So this is Grace, and Grace is going to share with them, Grace, about, you know, what you enjoy about field hockey and what do you think your strengths are and why you want to pursue the varsity and how you're going to stay on top of your grades, okay?
Okay. Like, for example, in my grades, in school, it's like I'm going to pretty much be doing the same thing and using like my free time in iLabs to work on projects at school.
What do you enjoy about playing field hockey?
I just love working with my teammates and like the team bonding. And like, I love having like success and working with my teammates to prove I'm a field.
And why do you think going up to varsity would be a good fit for you?
I just to go up there and like work better on my skills and to like grow as a player and to like improve my game.
Thank you. Does people have questions for Grace?
So I always say, when you guys have to come in and do this, I'm sure you'd rather play six games in a row than. Right? You did an excellent job. I just want to tell you that. I know when I was in high school, I couldn't do what you did. So, nice job.
Thank you. All right, Congress. This is Brittany Smith, and she is in seventh grade. And can you share what you enjoy about field hockey? And then I'll do the next question, because there are too many in a row.
What I enjoy about field hockey is just having fun with my teammates on the field and encouraging them to do great things and just trying my best to be a good teammate.
And tell us your strengths in field hockey. What do you do well in field hockey?
My strength in field hockey is being a leader, because I love helping out my teammates when they do something wrong and just encouraging them and like helping them be a better person.
And why do you think being promoted to the varsity would be a good fit for you at this time?
I think being promoted to varsity is going to be good for me because I want to get better and I want to build my relationship with the older girls because I really look up to them.
And how will you stay on top of your academics and your grades?
I will make sure to get home after practices and late games to do all my homework and ask all my teachers if I don't understand something, and I'll ask them for help.
She also has an older sister on the team, which I think is a good mentor for you, right? Does anybody have any questions for Brittany?
Same thing. Very nice job. Very impressive. Very nice presentation.
Murphy, either you or Nicole, could you tell me how many players we have on varsity right now and how many players we have on JV?
We have 13 on varsity and 12 on JV.
And she can carry a roster of 25?
Does the 13 and 12, does that include these two and one or the other?
12 on JV, yes.
Am I correct, even if we say she can play varsity, they could still continue playing JV until you're ready to move them, correct? So they could still be supporting the JV team and not move to varsity until you get ready for sectionals, things like that?
That is the plan. They will finish the season at JV and join us for preseason.
Okay, so you have to, there's only so many games in a season as an athlete can play, and you don't want to make the team ineligible with a number of games. And so Nikki has to count very carefully if she intermixes them so she doesn't make the team ineligible by postseason.
So but the team's plans is sort of keep them more on JV while they're sort of just finishing out the season right now, move them up when it's an appropriate time, mentoring them toward that final, getting them used to that, be on the field when all the nerves and jitters come and those kinds of things. Thank you.
So does that help too? Because I was thinking, if you take two off and you add two, and you, that would be 10 and that's.
And I was thinking the same thing, which is why I asked the question, because it, that's a close count.
So, I mean, I don't want to quote her, but most likely, you know, the program's philosophy is to, if there's enough work to fill the roster for Stasis, to take as many student athletes to support the team and also to have the experience. So if she can carry a roster of a certain number, it won't just be the two student athletes that presented tonight. They'll have more student athletes that are in different grades on the JV team have the same opportunity.
And I know from experience that often, when these young ladies move up, that they might not even get on the field. They're more on the sidelines, learning about that, oh, my gosh, this is scary. Oh, my gosh, look at the excitement. Look at the lights. They're also learning about that dynamics that happens when you're out there competing at such a high level. And then if Nikki gets to score at like 10-0, they'll go on the field. But I've seen that, and I appreciate Nikki that you do that with these assets.
I guess for any, the parents, students, anyone, I know. And I'm not going to lie, I've been on this board for a long time. And a lot of times, when these athletes come forward, it's very difficult because I want the best for them. I know you all do too, but it just, it's hard. One of my biggest concerns is a seventh grade, maybe 12-year-old, being around 17-year-olds, socially, emotionally. To me, that's usually one of the biggest concerns for me. And I know there was a sibling, so that's a little different. But I played sports my whole life. I know being on those sports buses, and it's a different type of thing to do there, so.
I'm Ted Lewis, Grace's father. Over the last 11 months, I've watched both of these kids excel. This is a golden opportunity for any of the players to experience. And I would strongly encourage you to give them this opportunity. We have watched the social, the emotional, all of that. We're on top of it. The coaches are. This is a big step. I would encourage you, the board, to approve this.
I know that one of the things that that we all look at is, yes, you guys, the JV and varsity here practice together. But I think part of our concern too is when you're playing against other teams, the dynamics with the older athletes on the other teams and the younger athletes on ours. Nikki, have you had any issues with that recently?
I haven't had any issues with it. You know, there's always a learning curve because when you take the 12-year-old brain with the 17-year-old brain, they think differently. They respond differently. So that is definitely something that Danny and I work on every single day of practice. But we've done that now for, I think, 13 years together. So it's not something that's new to us. We are aware that there are those conversations and those comments that happen. They're going to happen in the school day. They're going to happen, you know, wherever they are. So teaching them communication, how to talk to each other, the type of tone to use, and the wording, because the wording is different when you're 12 and when you're 17. So, you know, I might tell, you know, a player to push up. Well, in our program, that could be get down, give you 20, or move forward up a field. So it just depends on where they're at mentally that way. And there's, there's a lot of communication that happens in our program to help them through that type of communication. But also teaching our older ones how to communicate to the younger ones is huge also, because it's going to be a different communication coming up and going down at the same time with the age gap. And I think that's something that our team has struggled with, but at the same time has grown tremendously with this year, given that we have such a young team.
And do both of you girls, do you feel like if you were having an issue either with a teammate or somebody on another team, do you both feel like you have more than one person that you can go talk to to help you troubleshoot and figure things out? I just, I don't, personally, don't want to see you guys feeling like you're left out, you know, hanging out there and you're not quite sure how to deal with the situation. I mean, I know, I know you can both talk to your parents. Do you feel comfortable talking to Nikki and Danny and, and, you know, even other teammates if you need to?
It's like, the whole team, we're just like sisters now. And I know it's something that's been like this season, but I feel like I have a strong connection with all of them. And like Brittany has a connection with their sister. And like we have each other and other players that we're close to.
But do you feel the same way if it was somebody from another team? That you feel like you have enough people that you can go to for assistance or whatever?
Joanne and I met with the girls and had a similar discussion. And the parents also were invited in the room prior to the season starting with those same things. And so they've been monitoring it, you know, right up through. So that was something I think that as leaders and supervisors that, you know, that just like you as the board, those things are more important sometimes for development as a young adult than worrying about the Xs and Os of a particular game. So, you know, I think everybody is super diligent to make sure that that they are really overseen in a way that they can feel safe. But you're right, Stephanie, sometimes the world is different. May it be social media, or may it be the crowd, or may it be someone that's not vested in our community, that you have to be mindful of all environments when it comes to maturing as well as in athletics.
I do have one more. So usually, it's a lot of social, emotional that I'm really concerned with. But I also am concerned with stature compared to other players. So that is another big concern that, I know people are gunning for Whitney Point. They want to make a statement, and I would hate to see somebody make a statement on maybe a newer player, put it that way.
I would say these two players are two of the fastest players on the current JV team. Certainly, some of them most physical. They can handle them. I understand your concerns. We've watched after the last 10 months, they've been playing with these older girls, not just in the Whitney Point scenario, but traveling and playing, and they can handle themselves.
I mean, it's really up to Nikki and Danielle to make coaching decisions to have the best matchups. But, you know, accidents do happen and situations do occur. And unfortunately, as a director, parents have to sign a consent that sports are risky and potentially catastrophic or life-threatening injuries. And so, you know, it's, again, a responsibility to all of us to not put athletes in those situations. But we wouldn't want that to happen to anybody. But it is a risk people take when they play sports.
I guess just in closing, I mean, for me, and I'm sorry if I'm stepping on her rails. I know when, when people come here, and I appreciate that. I know you guys haven't entered into it lightly. You've been thinking about it a long time. For us, we're just getting this now. And trust us, we wouldn't be here if we didn't care about our people and our community. I'm sure a lot of us have played sports. We've seen sports. We think they're wonderful. But we just still, our main thing is we want students to be safe on every level. And as a board, if we don't do our due diligence and make sure that everything is the way that it should be, then we're, we're not doing our job either. So we're not here to stand in your way. We just want to make sure that we're comfortable going forward, so.
No, that, that was very well said. Thank you. And I just want to say, no matter what the board decides, you will have a bright future, no matter what happens. Because I had a young lady who in seventh grade came to me, who was a super-duper swimmer, was supposed to be on the varsity JV swimming team and said, hey, Mom, my friends are playing field hockey. Could I try this out? And I think maybe, you know, she made the Olympics a lot of years later. So life can change, and life, but most of all, have fun with whatever you decide to do. That's important.
And I think maybe she, you know, she made the Olympics a lot of years later. So life can change and life, but most of all, have fun with whatever you decide to do. That's important.
So thank you, Beth. Again, I know this is probably the hardest thing you've had to do probably almost ever. Young ladies, you did fantastic. Very, very impressed.
It takes a lot of guts to be willing to come here and answer our questions and.
Personally, I think it takes more guts to be on the field when the ball is the fastest moving ball of all sports, including baseball. It is.
Like, like you said, Alicia had goalie pads on. I had goalie pads on when I played and. Okay, so we're, we're gonna do it formally. Be resolved by the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education of the Whitney Point Central School District approved the advanced placement of Grace Lewis, seventh grade student, as a field hockey player to be included on the varsity field hockey team. May I have a motion?
So.
I have Tom and Chris. Any other questions or comments from the board? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstaining? Congratulations, Gracie. Be resolved by the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education of the Whitney Point Central School District approved the advanced placement of Brynlee Smith, seventh grade student, as a field hockey player to be included on the varsity field hockey team. May I have a motion?
So.
I'll do Chris and Tom that time.
Yeah.
Um, any further comments from the board? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstaining? Congratulations to you two, Brynlee.
And I, I don't want to belittle how hard it was for the parents to have to come and sit and do all this. So as a parent, that this is, it's terrible being a parent sometimes, but congratulations and good luck.
They didn't let my daughter.
One of the things that the board relies on is that we rely on Murphy and Joanne being able to assess how the parents are going to support their student. And they would not have made the recommendation to us to approve this if they didn't one hundred percent feel that you guys are going to be supporting them. So that says a lot about you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the patience of going through what we have to go through to do this. So, thank you very much.
Play hard, but have fun. Absolutely.
I can hold and relax.
Go have some dinner. Yeah. Good night. So that brings us back to the code of conduct.
So um, I, uh, you know, we've been working on the code of conduct for a long time. We had a committee that came together last year with representatives from across the district and did a lot of great work. Um, and then we get, we sent that code of conduct to our attorney. Our attorney's a little busy. It's taking a long time. So um, we had to, I had, you know, we had to take action on this. So um, I sent it to another firm and another attorney went through it. Um, and then I sent you the notes um, from that. Um, and then I, I did have a little feedback from some people um, that I would just like to review um, briefly with you.
Were we supposed to send that to you?
I'm sorry, Joanne.
Oh, well, okay.
I didn't either. I mean, I got notes all through this. Oh, my goodness. Okay, well, all right, well then. So go ahead, tell me, you want to start? Well, why don't you start? Maybe it's already something I have. Well, um, so I mean, did you read the edits that were in there?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And I'm, and I'm gonna just um, note that um, the work that we did was based on New York State law um, and the Dignity uh, for All Students Act. So it wasn't just like we made it up, the committee. Everybody worked really hard to make sure that we had the appropriate language in there. The two things that um, came up that are post uh, legal edits are, one, um, it's revisiting the idea of which we had in originally, family as opposed to parent. And I don't know if you saw the edit that he said, that there's a distinction between that he, that he felt that family was too loose. Um, that it's really somebody who's in the parental role and that we have in the definition of parent, that it could be someone other than a traditional parent. But I think we have many, many people in our community who are not traditional parents. So.
That was one of my notes too.
My own families, yeah. Not so much about families, but can we be more inclusive?
That's right. And so some of the suggestions were to have it be a caregiver. I mean, there are, are other terms that people use, although some people don't really like those terms either, guardian.
And then legal guardian be used and then it could be parent guardian.
I mean, I think that, I mean, we can do whatever we want. I mean, the advice that we get is just the advice we get. Um, I mean, we wouldn't want to do anything that would lead us astray. And 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 what we're really saying in this language is that there's a responsibility of you know, the part of everybody who's in the child's life.
Right.
Um, so I think that I, I too would err on, on something that's more welcoming and inclusive to everybody in our community. So can we say legal guardian? I guess that's the question. What term do you want to use? I think legal guardian is okay.
I think it's not as warm and fuzzy, but it covers what you need to have covered. So it, it's more inclusive. I might not sound as nice.
Did you say parents and legal guardians or parents and or?
So it'd be in the document by sixty eight times.
Oh, then you have to define it. Okay, yeah.
So it's sixty eight times that it says parent in this, in this.
Yeah, I was, I wasn't really happy with it.
You don't mind saying or.
I, I like legal guardian and defining it as parents, guardians, what, whatever we have to define it as. That's my personal.
Because the legal guardian could be a grandparent.
Right.
Or an uncle or.
An older sister.
A family. And and I've seen instances where it's a friend of the family who has stepped down, you know, so.
And I mean, if it's in there that many times, you don't have to put the, the definition, the asterisk or, you know, legal document, image below, whatever, however, they, they need to do it.
Okay. Just like in the first page where it says this code of conduct and then it puts in parentheses code. So we can say legal guardian, do a definition and then wherever it says parents throughout, we just say guardian. Is that acceptable to the rest of the board?
I like that. Okay, that, I think it's a change. All right. And then another thing that came up was um, definition of sexual orientation, which um, is it's page three, right at the beginning of the definition. So it is um, and this, you know, this has to do with uh, harassment, it's anti harassment. So sexual repress, sexual orientation, this is an old definition that it's listed here. Um, it's not as inclusive as the current um, human rights um, definition, but even that is sort of subject to um, discussion. And like, I know that New York City changed theirs and the state of California changed theirs to have just more general language that's just conclusive of whatever. It also sort of future proves the policy because, you know.
And so we don't have to keep making changes.
So I, I, I mean, I would like to be able to say, I mean, really, again, we looked at New York State law when we developed this. I mean, so you can either say something that is uh, you know, as defined by New York State Human Rights uh, Law or something like that and not have these specific things called out.
I like that idea a lot.
Um.
And it covers twice.
Yeah.
I mean, it's there, but it says that we, we're following the state law and that's what we have to do and that's what our charge is.
And then as, as that changes, we don't have to continually change this document, which is part of our goals.
Because like I, so New York State um, Human Rights Law right now is has some, has some other things in this already. And I know that they're looking to, to change it to more into that other model where it's just, it doesn't have specific things. It's just like, you know, describes what we're talking about more generally. Um, so as they change theirs, then ours would just apply.
Apply.
I think it's better anyway, because when you have to, whenever you have a list, you always forget something. And then you forget something if it wasn't, you know, it's not intentional, but
Right.
the more things that you have that you can lose.
Yep.
And this, it's better to have it more concise and not offend anybody and but still be covered.
And what this is really speaking to is that we, nobody should ever be harassed for anything, right? You know, however, you know, any part of who they are as a human being. Okay. All right. So Chris, did you have other things?
The last one you did?
Yep.
Oh, okay. Let me just look here. Couple of things mine were editing, but I can give them to Stacy later. They were just like spaces and stuff that need to be done. Um, okay, so we're changing the parents. Okay, that's good. Um, on page eight, no school rules and help their children understand them. I don't know why that bothers me. But how do we know how they, if they understand them? Like, how do you know somebody understands something? We can't use it as a learning objective because we can't judge understanding. So I, I don't know what the. Yeah, no. I, I, I don't know if there's a better word, but it just bothers me. I'm just saying that, that's all. Know school rules and help their children understand them.
Do you abide by them rather than understand?
Maybe, maybe that's.
Demonstrate, yeah.
Demonstrate.
Although they might understand and choose not to abide by them. So that often happens.
I mean, what we're really asking families to do here is just support school rules, right?
Right.
I mean, so is.
So they're aware.
Is help their children and help support their children in abiding them and using them. I don't know, something like that.
Know what's expected.
Know what is expected? I like that.
Yeah.
Know what's expected.
To be aware of what is expected. I like that.
Yeah, I mean, the whole idea of this, I, I agree with, I don't really like that either, Chris. I mean, the whole idea is to say we're in this together.
Right.
Partnership.
Right.
Yep.
And hose it and do their best. Yeah, I wrote that. Number five, do their best. Um, I, I just felt that ensure your child be dressed and groomed in a manner consistent with dress, student dress code. I mean, we, I know your dress code is here. I have it here, but we know we have children who are extremely poor. They're lucky to have a piece of clothing to put on. Their shoes might be too big. They might be very unsafe shoes because they can't have anything else on their feet because they don't have anything. So I get this, but i- it did make me a little sad.
Me too.
So.
But, but it's, but it's um, unfortunately, if you leave it open, then, then there's a loophole for others to abuse that, that hole.
Right.
And and I mean, I don't know where else you can go.
And the place that this would apply would be like, you know, there's certain things that are offensive that people might wear. I mean, that's the kind of thing that you would want.
So that's why I said ensure their children do their best to be dressed and groomed in a manner consistent. But anyhow, you don't have to change it. I'm just telling you how I felt.
So that's on page fourteen?
Yeah.
I don't have.
No, I have it on page eight. It's on page eight.
Okay. Uh, I just have my notes and I don't have my copy with me, so, oh, which is good. Uh, but yeah, the dress code, so uh, number two, I guess, is it on page fourteen? I think that in my.
Um, on the dress code, I think that.
Yes, yes.
Yep, okay, so uh, it just seemed, I'm just trying to remember because I looked at this. As we go, um, we, did we take out all of the clothing types that we had listed in ours? Is that what the?
All of those.
Yeah, it was taken out. So we're not restricting any types of clothing.
We took this out at, at, when we worked on it together originally. And the reason that we did that is because um, it's considered discriminatory. Remember this conversation that if depending on body size, right, that what's deemed short shorts or what's deemed that then you get into really and so um, all, all legal advice is stay away from anything that could be, would look different on different people or that you may end up disciplining somebody or telling them to change one person because it looks different on them because of body size.
So crop tops are fine. Showing, bearing your midriff. So showing skin is fine?
Spaghetti strands.
Yeah, I mean, there's some things.
And there's something that doesn't matter what, how your build is, it's just.
Right.
It was.
Yes. Showing your belly button.
Well, it does say, it does say on number two, not, not be revealing or see through. And ensure that the undergarments are completely covered with outer clothing. So I did have a question mark there. I mean, I get where you're going, but undergarments completely covered with outer clothing. So I know that a lot of people wear bra straps that are visible because they say it's a sports bra. I'm allowed to let that show because I could be in public and it's like I'm a sports bra. We even have teachers that do that. They'll have a shoulder thing down and that sports bra strap will be, so, or I, I have, I had a little concern about that statement. How do we judge underclothing?
Well, and there's also, it's not just a bra strap, but I mean, you know, there's some underwear that can be seen.
Yeah.
So that's sort of a different. It's not like, oh.
So I just wonder, can we even enforce this statement? That's what I was wondering about.
Well, I'll, I'll tell you that we, that the enforcement of dress code in the last couple of years at like, at, you know, ask for legal advice is to, unless it's really extreme or offensive.
So just not have one.
And you come, you come covered as, you know, and you're not, it's not.
Yeah. So can we, so do, should we have this statement here? Should we not be revealing or see through? With undergarments being covered appropriately instead of, or something like that?
The problem is if we don't enforce it and something is extremely inappropriate and then we enforce it, then they're gonna say, well, you didn't, you didn't get her. She's been wearing a crop top this whole time. So I'm wearing a bralette today and now you're on me. So I'm just saying that could happen.
What we've done in the last couple of years is, is to focus on you, essentially, you're covering this whole section of your body. Like, this is like, we had some drawings that we talked about, just said, just super basic, keeping your torso and like, and and that we come to school to learn. And that we're not going to get into battles because you get into, you get into bad situations where you start pointing to, you know, I, why, why are you looking at my underwear? Why are you looking at, why you, you wouldn't have seen that if you weren't staring at me. You know, I mean, it's just, you go down a road that you don't want to go. But I will tell you, and you know, people in the room can say that it, it has been better to not have to, I mean, a lot of time was wasted and a lot of upset by kids and families um, because we were doing battle over all those little things. And um, so just coming to school, ready to learn and focusing on that. And as long as what you're wearing is not completely distracting or offensive in some way, we want you here to learn. Because in, 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 I mean, we don't, you know, I mean, families have told us they don't agree with us on those rules either. And then you end up in this adversarial thing over when they go to college or they go and have negative class.
True.
Well, but then you're paying for it and that's.
So my, my, my concern was can we enforce this? That was my more concern about the end statement. Undergarments that are completely covered in outer clothing. So that was just my more concern. Not that we shouldn't say this. My concern is can we?
We can, but.
Well, I mean, unless it's, it's really, you know, a concern for that student, if it's really distracting. I mean, we don't, like you said, I mean, people were, I mean, is, is anybody bothered by somebody's sports bra sticking out?
Right, right.
I don't know.
I just, I, I.
But a sports bra is different than a long underwear show.
We keep sliding the wrong way. And, and I mean, if it's gonna be there, it should be there. And if it's not enforced, then don't even put it in there. I mean, why is it on there if it's not gonna be enforced? And if we can't say what it's supposed to be, I mean, really? And I just, is it just there because we have to have it there, but we're not gonna enforce it?
Well, I think the thought was by, by leaving in the undergarments, that's a little bit more clear with the expectation is that you're covering this whole part of your body.
I get it, but I mean, when you don't want to, if you don't want to embarrass or do something to somebody, then you're doing nothing.
How about changing the word completely to appropriately?
That's something that maybe is what's.
Yeah, I know, but it gives you more wiggle. I don't know.
Completely just feels like all inclusive. It's like when you say the whole world.
Or just had, get rid of completely. Just say are covered.
With outer clothing, yes. Yeah. Seems like it's more enforceable that way. When it has to be done. When it has to be done. Sorry.
I know, like you said, I've been going into schools for a long time, and it's not even just the students, it's just all kinds of people wearing all kinds of stuff that just can't believe it, and I'm not an old crew either. I just can't believe it.
So, Joanne, I do have one question, um, with the board part, like, it has the board stuff here, I forget which page that was on. You see? It talks about the duties of the board. Um, it seemed really slim. I'm sorry. What page is that? Was that under the Bill of Rights? It's building administrator.
Page thirteen?
Page thirteen, I had it marked. So collaborate students, adopt review, and like, it seemed good, but it doesn't give us a lot to do. I, I was just wondering that maybe we need to have one there that says that the board will be doing their board goals and taking care of things that they're supposed to take care of, that are with a district. I don't know, I don't care, but it just seemed a little, little light, that's all. I have no idea what other schools do it.
It's specific to the
Yeah.
So that's why
As long as we look at it and review it, and that's
Review it, okay. Let me, I don't have a lot. But I don't get it. I'm trying to read this thing back, I read this back.
Maybe if you should have a desk, I'd have to write a polo stuff. I know you need the polos.
It's not that I hate the polos, I hate the way the one I have fits.
Sorry.
No, but it's not
You don't like them?
No, I don't object to polos in general. I like polos. But the one I have
Yeah.
It does not fit me well.
Twenty-four, Joanne.
A classroom teacher may remove the disruptive student from class for up to five days, remove from class, applies to the class of the removing teacher, only the student should be remade, remanded to the principal's office unless otherwise directed. So I, I do know that it gave more description, but kind of classroom teacher just aside five days? I know there was a lot more going into this, but I didn't know that that, that statement seemed like, well, I can just say, you're out for five days.
It's same legislation and it's not really that simple, but it's, it's required to be in the Code of Conduct.
It's Okay.
There's a, there's a, yeah, there's more that obviously
I saw there's lots of stuff that happened, so there's a statement that says they can throw them out for five days, but then there was all this other stuff that was happening.
But that's what it says in the legislation, but even though it's not that simple.
Okay. Just, just asking about that. Um, each teacher must, the page twenty-six, each teacher must keep a complete log. And a district approved, provided for for all cases, remove students. Where does the log stay? Does it stay with the teacher? Does it go to, what, what happens there? I was just curious. The student man, oh, so you're using student management system, because I know they were using paper over at CEA at one time. Are they still doing paper at CEA?
Yes, they're talking about like, maybe a year old
Okay.
Something, they're gonna keep a formal law on that, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, um. I thought on page twenty-seven. A tape recording, maybe we should have that, save that too more currently, which, because we're not running cassette tapes anymore.
Or reel to reel for that one.
That's right. It's right at the bottom.
Recording.
It says a tape recording, so maybe it should be electronic recording or something.
Just a recording.
Just a recording, yeah, just needs an update in language there. Sorry, if I'd known you wanted this ahead of time, I would have gone. Think I'm, I think I'm gone. I'm really looking at me like Oh, I couldn't find, and if I had it, um, on page thirty-three, did we define the ID acronym earlier in the document? Which one? It's on page thirty-three, IDEA, I know it's the acronym, but I didn't know if we, I know I watched the acronyms were pretty well done, but I didn't necessarily see that one.
I thought something I can don't share.
Thanks, Joanne.
I know that we have an other related documents, but I don't remember seeing it.
Okay. Um, yeah. Who is we? Oh, and then I saw on page thirty-seven, we changed, um, we seek to maintain, we encourage positive, uh, sometimes I can we just say who we is?
District.
It's the district instead of we? We, we, we went all the way home. I'm sorry. No, I'm boring you guys. Sorry, sorry, everybody out there. Okay, I think the only other thing I had was mailing a summary of Code of Conduct written in plain language. This is on page forty-two. I know we're saying it should be in plain language, but should we make that a little bit better, that language that I'm concerned that plain language doesn't cover somebody who's speaking Spanish or Portuguese in our district, something like that.
The plain language, um, Code of Conduct is a term that is like, that's the term they use, that you have to guarantee that you provide that, and that's what it uses. We're also legally required to
It's not, not, not in legal ease, is that what it means?
It's in regulation that it says, that it has to be plain language version.
So that's what they're using.
That's what they use, and that's why we use it, but we're also required to make sure that we, um, give it in whatever language is the home language. And it's, and it still says mailed because we do mail it and we keep it in our calendar.
Okay, yeah, I knew it was in our calendar. So my last question is on page forty-two. The board will sponsor an in-service education program. When do we do that? It says the board's gonna do it. What? Is that what we're doing right now?
No, we sponsored, it doesn't mean we actually do it.
Oh, we're just like saying, yay, you go, right?
Right, now, what we're saying is that because what we're saying is that we chief charge
Right.
The superintendent to make sure that there is like advertising and doing it ourselves.
No. I just was kind of curious what I'm gonna have to do there. Thank you for your patience.
Molly, do you have others?
Uh, well, um, just what I mentioned, um, I see that the lawyers changed, once the wording changed his or her to their.
Yeah.
But now it's, we're referring to a single person, so that's a little confusing.
That's the accepted pronouns.
Yeah, it's accepted pronouns. Here's the all, that's legal stuff. We had to do that.
No? Okay. Great.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything? We'll be ready to go.
Big clip.
Okay, policies for first reading, there are none. Policies for second reading, we have the wellness policy, um. Looking to approve policy seven-five-four-one, wellness policy for second reading and adoption. May I have a motion?
No one.
Thank you, Chris, and a second.
Okay.
I didn't hear who that, thank you, Aubrey. Okay. Did anybody have any questions regarding wellness policy or concerns? Or some? So just as a reminder, that it's the policy, but the plan is a living document.
Kind of like the format, it's just more of a framework, it's not a real specific, that may be a lot easier.
Very true.
Yeah. Which means we won't have to change it this frequently because
Right. I mean, Joanne may have shared with you that we're currently working with the health department, so we'll continue to bring updates if necessary. Um, any further questions from the board? Comments in favor?
Bye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
I'm gonna keep rattling with
Okay, that brings us to our first opportunity for comments from the public. Um, each speaker will be limited to a maximum of three minutes, and the entire public comment period to a maximum of thirty minutes. This may be waived by a majority vote of the board. The board requests that each speaker stand, state their name, residency, and topic of discussion. By law, the board will not permit any public statements regarding individual students or employees. And remember that while the board takes public commentary seriously, we are not allowed to comment or respond during this meeting, as this is our opportunity to hear from our stakeholders. Items that are brought to the attention of the board will be taken under consideration for future responses or action, or the proper staff member will get active at the appropriate time. All that being said, um, there is also a second opportunity towards the end of the meeting. Is there anybody who would like to speak at this time?
Does anybody stand here or come closer?
Um.
Yeah, sir.
Cause that way they
Yeah.
My name is Brandy Miller, and I reside in Lyle with my husband and three boys. All three boys attend the school district. I am heavily involved with the wrestling program as the president of the Whitney Point Grapplers. I have been co-director of Whitney Point Youth Club Wrestling for the last five years. My middle son will now be on the Modified Wrestling Team this season after participating in youth club wrestling since kindergarten. My oldest son has wrestled on Modified for the last two years, but will be focusing on basketball now that he is in high school. The last two years, I witnessed the Modified Wrestling Coach attempt to cover multiple wrestlers who would be wrestling at the same time. At times, we would have wrestlers on the mat without, without a coach in their corner. Our wrestling program has been growing every year, and I am anticipating that Modified Wrestling will again be a large team, as we have had multiple wrestlers now transitioning out of youth club into modified. Is there a plan to have a second coach to assist this season? Does the modified team have to have a minimum number to qualify to have a second coach? From my understanding, we have a new teacher at the middle school who is interested in coaching. Will he be considered to assist with modified team as he is already building relationships with them as their teacher? That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other takers for this opportunity? Okay. Brings us to commendations. So we'll start off with, um, the Board of Education. Um, next week is Board of Education Recognition Week, and there's little gifts for each of you there as a thank you. Um, but we would like to formally, uh, thank you all for your dedicated service and commitment to the Whitney Point School District. Um, and know that you, your effort and your time and your thoughtfulness is very much appreciated, so thank you to all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so Whitney Point PTA, um, Ms. DeAntonio, Ms. Prokop, for a fun annual family weenie roast held on September thirteenth on a new playground, it's very fun. Uh, Mrs. Holly, Ms. Verdic, and Ms. Paul Cheffrons and students for a fun evening of dancing at the Homecoming Dance. Coach Sam Sol and the Whitney Point Modified A Soccer Team and their families for compliments received from their representation at their game and marathon. Compliments included a very classy and wonderful display of citizenship and sportsmanship by all. A large showing of families, positivity from families, and players toward both teams and inclusivity by the coaching staff. Marathon School District Board members had a positive, had positive comments to share at their Board of Education meeting regarding the game, when a community member spoke during public comments about the pleasant experience of the game. So thank you to our neighbors in Marathon. And thank you to our, our wonderful team and everybody who's involved there. Um, the Whitney Point Field Happy Coach, Nicole Houston, and team for being named Amphenol Aerospace Team of the Week by Fox Forty, um, in mid-September. Tom Murphy and, uh, Rip Yarish of Sweethearts and Heroes for presenting to all Whitney Point Schools on hope, hold on, possibilities exist. Empathy in action and brave, these are their programs, um, and, um, they, they had just an incredible experience. I wish they, they could come back right over again, um, in all three schools, so we thank them very much. It's very heartening. Um, Whitney Point, uh, CSD alumna Emma Morgan for being named State University of New York Athletic Conference SUNYAC Field Hockey Defensive Athlete of the Week for the week of September, September fifteenth. Congratulations to Emma. Um, Rockon Cafe, Cornell Cooperative Extension and the Rural Health Network of, um, Southern Central New York for presenting the ABC Taste Test with four, uh, pre-K students, you can see that on our social media, it was very cute. Um, the ABC Taste Test introduces new foods to students and helps to educate them on where their food comes from and how it grows. And TRA's fourth grade students for helping out a fellow fourth grader from Truantsburg on their Whitney Point's New York, uh, Social Studies project. Students work together to write letters and draw pictures about why they love their school and their hometown to share with the student.
And that all started with the student writing to the mayor of the village of Whitney Point, and he shared it, and then a bunch of us teachers said, let the fourth graders do it. They did it.
Yep. Okay. Hey, old business, there is none. That brings us to the district presentations. So I was, um, supposed to go last month. So I was a little late at giving you the, uh, thanks. Linked to my presentation, but I did email it to the five of you just now, and then I'll make sure that send it out to everybody, uh, but I did bring a couple of handouts. I would suggest, uh, those who can't look at the presentation on their computer, look this way, because there's gonna be data and all that kind of stuff. It's fun. Okay, so this is the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, our starting point. Where are we going? I go too fast. That's not the right one. I don't know, it's not the right, it's not the right presentation. I don't know why this one, I don't know. Sorry. Is this the one you just said? First slide says backward design collection from existence.
Yeah, that's, that's the right one, so.
Do you want to plug my laptop in?
No.
No.
It's on my drive, actually. I wonder why there's two. I'm so productive, guys, I made two totally different slide decks. Alright. Yeah. Starting. So a little picture, it's rearview mirror. Um, one of the things that you all talked about was the exit surveys and seeing the information on that. So Yeah. Yeah. So why don't we look back to collect information from exiting employees so that we can gather various viewpoints and really strategize to increase morale and just in general how our employees are feeling and supported on campus. Um, there is a link to the survey results, but you have them in front of you. I'll bring them up for the fabulous crowd, because I'm sure you're all like, can't get over here. That's really hard to do, sorry. Okay, so you should all be able to, you have the paper in front of you, but you guys can see it kind of in the back. What happens is we have, um, an employee that's exiting our campus for a variety of reasons. That employee gets a letter and it has a whole bunch of things that need to be accomplished before they leave the district. One of them is an exit survey. It's not a requirement. So it's not that everyone is going to answer, but most people do, they want to provide information for us, so at this particular time that I pulled it, there were fifty-six respondents. Um, you could see the breakdown, the different schools or positions where they were. Exit reasons, most were resignations, and we know, um, just being part of the board and hearing the resignations, lots of them for lots of different reasons, right? Um, so it's not necessarily, if they want to leave us, sometimes they have to leave us. So if you look below, you're gonna see that there were questions about culture and climate. And it has a positive and a negative percentage. Those are out of the fifty-six. So it's a Google form, you put them in, says how many people respond, and this was the information that came out.
So there was fifty-six, it said optional, so did all fifty-six do this?
No, we had way more than fifty-six people.
Oh, this is
This is just fifty-six, it's not giving us the end of overall.
Yeah, I don't have a count of all the people who left
No, no, no.
Whitney Point.
No, so it says I'm just trying to figure out, like, forty-five percent, like, two people, or was that fifty-six?
Fifty-six. And it's fifty-six.
And it's fifty-six.
Like does, he's asking.
So the last one down at the bottom, it says optional. So we didn't have to fill that out. So did we have fifty-six answer that question?
How many?
That part.
Yes, fifty-six. So I kept.
For that bottom part. Okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
You knew what you were saying. I know what I was saying.
And I just had to get to where it went. Yes. So I included the fifty-six that did the optional portion.
Okay, thank you.
So you get all the information together. Alright, questions about what you're seeing? Yep, go ahead, Chris.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask not quite the similar question, but it says Whitney Point provides tools you needed. Forty-five percent were positive, ten percent were negative. That doesn't equal a hundred percent.
I didn't have to answer though.
So what Tom is saying is correct then.
So of the fifty-six. Of the fifty-six. My problem is I would bring, I'll bring up the Google report, but I don't want anybody's names going out. So what I'm going to do is I'll give you the printout from the Google report so that you can do all the math and see how many people answered and how many people didn't answer.
Well, it just gives you a better feel for is this a big group of forty-five? Is it like most of the? I know forty-five is forty-five, but it's forty-five, forty-five percent of two people or is it forty-five percent of fifty-six?
Absolutely understand.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, so that was, that's my statement.
And when we're looking at this, we are getting our first snapshot of data. We had, I, were we doing an exit survey beforehand? Um, Joanne?
Yeah, a really basic one. But okay, I'm just going to ask you a question then, just to be annoying too. It appears to me that you do, my understanding is that you do not have to answer. So of the fifty-six, they don't have to answer every question.
Correct.
Right.
So each question has its own end.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes. So we just need an end for each question. That's all.
And, and then just going back, I'm sorry about the percentages, but with the exit reason, so that doesn't end up to a hundred percent either. So were the other people, it was for other reasons?
I'm not going out of the park, guys. Just to keep you. Not going out of the park, yes.
Were the other people fired? I'm just curious.
Or they didn't answer.
But we know. I mean, they don't really have to answer that. We have the information whether they resigned or whether they retired.
Correct.
Okay.
So I can go back and.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, because they only have the eighty-seven point seven.
Right, yeah.
Yes. That's okay. Yeah, no, that makes sense. I will get all the individual numbers. I was trying to just put together something.
It's okay.
That would show what's exiting. But I will get the number for each and every one of those. And the number of people who have left the district since twenty-one, so we can kind of compare that as well.
And this is one of our very broad board goals. So it's something we can work out over the next year. And so the other thing I would like personally, if we start digging this, what was, what category did they resign from? Because we have a lot of aides resign versus teachers. I would like to see that when we start looking at it.
So and, and, and if you, if you use Google forms, you know, I mean, so we can get these numbers.
Right.
But you know exactly, like to me, if nineteen percent said that the culture was not supportive, like, like, I really want to know what that number is, you know, and I want to know what category that they're in. So.
Yes.
If there's a problem, is it?
Right.
District wide or is it in one area?
Right.
And that's why.
It's okay. We can come back to this.
Yeah.
I like seeing this.
Thank you for the start. I mean, you're looking at whether it was overall positive or overall negatives or all that.
Yes.
So this is just a quick and dirty look to start with.
Yes, thank you for the start, Jan. I appreciate it.
I will provide for. All the numbers. Okay, so since we're starting from this idea of looking back, we looked at exiting interviews. Now we're going to look at some data, right? So it's summative data that ends up at the end of the year and then we use that data to see what we're going to do next year. And it's all about growth, right? So we have to look at data that shows where we are, where our strengths are, where we can put our resources and get the best bang for our buck. So I looked, I was reading a Harvard study and I have the link there. So you'll be able to go to the Harvard study. Thinking about where we came from in terms of the pandemic and how we're getting back with our feet underneath us. So some of the statistics, our students in high poverty school districts lost more ground than students in higher income districts. And has not been caught up yet. Most parents believe that their own children have already caught up from the pandemic slide. And that the studies are showing American students have made up only one-third of pandemic losses in math and one-quarter losses in reading. So we knew what we were walking into, right? Like this was really hard. We did the best we could with our students under these situations and now we're starting to make gains. So how do we continue that growth? The way the state wants us to do it is with institutional accountability. So we have our ESSA law, which allows for all of our students to be numbered in terms of subgroups to let us see which groups are doing well, which groups need some more help. Can we look at all the students together? So when we're looking at the ESSA data, that's what they'll show. And I'm going to give you more pieces of it. But important to know, there is a comprehensive support and improvement. So that's called a CSI accountability. And when they're looking at ESSA data, it's not against a normed number. It's against each other. So in New York State, we are working not against each other, but as data pools together. So a CSI would be they've taken all this accountability data and the schools that are at the five percent lowest will get the CSI designation. Then there's a targeted support and improvements. So this is where some of our subgroups or someone's subgroups are falling below. And so you'll be targeted in those areas to really put your emphasis and your energy there because that's what we're trying to do. This was started twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, I think is when they did the first accountability. We were, no?
No, that's when they reworked it into this model. So like if some of you on this board will remember that we used to be identified. You know, for twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. There was different, they reworked it to this terminology, but you know, we were first a city school, then we were a school. The TSI, yeah, and then and it was for a subgroup, like it's, you know, it's, they rephrase it. And then the last part here that she's getting to is the, the real kicker. The third one.
Local support.
Yeah, because what used to be in good standing is now called LSI. So everybody who's not identified, that's why you're called local support and improvement. You don't get a good standing anymore.
Well, but if it's based on COVID, then nobody is in good standing because we're not at that baseline we were before.
Yeah, and that's what they're saying is that everybody can improve. Yeah.
They, they use the language on the state report. But I was, I was actually looking at our school report card actually last week.
Well, that's what that language is. It's from this, it's from that. And also the state has this accountability system because ESSA, the federal government requires them, so. I'm sorry.
So these are the big designations. Prior to COVID, as Joanne said, there was a different system, but in like sixteen, seventeen, we started going with this system where we're looking at numbers and comparing in terms of the accountability groups that they set up and levels. And it's almost like when they're scoring the ELA and math exams three, eight, they come up with these formulas to make it all work, to see where the scale score is and to see where AIS is going to be. It's something similar to this. Obviously it's not magic. They lay it all out. So I just want to show you what this looks like. So as a school district, we're broken up into elementary, middle and then high school. We have indicators for our accountability that we have to look at. And then we need to look at what level our students are for that particular category. So remember, we're going against the whole state. Level one would be that low five percent and it goes all the way up to a level four. And then across the indicators, you get, end up with a scenario. So I have the red line on the first one to say that the scenario one resulted in identifying the lowest performing five percent schools that will subsequently, read it over here, be the only scenario used to identify schools and districts for the TSI in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So as we move through these numbers, we are hoping to get scenario three, scenario four, scenario five, scenario six. That's our goal. That's where we want to end up. So that across weighted average achievement, core subject performance, ELP, which they'll mention often is the English language proficiency and then chronic absenteeism. So those are categories for elementary and middle schools. And then at the high school, we're almost looking at the same thing. It's weighted average achievement, core subject performance. Then they add in graduation rate plus ELP and the chronic absenteeism. So going across all of these categories, they're taking all of our summative data and then putting us inside of these scenarios so that we know what kind of work we need to do, not only for ourselves, but as a part of the state. So this is one of the matrix. So we get to a place where you need an MIP. So it's measuring interim progress because we want to see how kids are moving forward. And depending on what the category is and depending what the level is, you then end up with a minimum and a maximum. So you can see at the elementary and middle school level, weighted average achievement for a level one is eleven point seventeen, the max seventy-two point four. But if you look at weighted average achievement for the high school, level one is a zero to forty-two point seven. So I just want to point out that there are lots of moving pieces in the accountability status and that it's not the same from elementary, middle that it is to the high school information. So this is Carl E. Adams, their grades K through three. We look at one, two and three for accountability. And I wanted to point out that these are our subgroups that they've got listed in this report. So we have all students. ED is economically disadvantaged, SWD, students with disabilities. And then we have one particular column for white. There are plethora of subtitle, subgroups that we go through and I can read them all to you. So what I wanted to point out is this level one, clearly we never want to see ourselves in a level one. We want to do all that we can to get our students above that level. But I do think it does highlight the data that we had on our COVID recovery. That this would be a place where we're really struggling to kind of make the moves across the nation, across the state that we want to make. But if you look at chronic absenteeism, we are moving in the right direction. We've gone to level threes and level fours for the twenty-three, twenty-four summary data.
I have a real quick question. So that level one that's, that's there for economically disadvantaged, that means that that's the lowest performing five percent across the state?
In that level.
Right.
Yes, with all the other schools that are there. So we could be very much at the top and getting ready to cross over to two. We would look at the scale score to see how far we are in that number. Yes.
That's still five percent, like we're in the lowest five percent. So if even if we move, we'd be maybe six percent? Well, I'm just saying, I, I, I know what you're saying, but it's still not.
I'm good.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the numbers aren't static. Every time they do these accountability numbers.
But, but it's still a red and it's a one. It's still.
What's the highest number we can get?
Six or seven.
Level four?
No.
Oh, four.
So there's no areas. So scenarios are combining them all together.
Four is the highest we get. What does it mean? And your slide, this is Carly Adams, primary one through eight. Because they don't split it up. By the way, we have our school split up.
Okay.
One through eight is elementary, middle.
Okay.
Yep. I also wanted to point out that when we're looking at weighted averages, again, talking about what you're talking about, Tom, that number changes from where our five percent is, our ten percent is. So it can look different and we can still end up with very similar numbers, but if the state did differently, then we would look different.
You're saying our five percent. It's not five percent.
No, it's the whole state.
Okay, so you just said our five percent. You meant collectively.
I meant, I meant that.
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to follow this in.
That's okay. I meant that.
Okay. I'm sorry. I'm not trying to be, I'm really just trying to understand this.
So I think that.
Oh, you're doing. Trust me, there's a lot there. It's just, I ask a lot of questions when I.
So I was just pointing out, we've got a weighted average performance level and then we've got chronic absenteeism. So across all of these things, as a school district, certainly we want to raise all of them. There's no way that we want to say there's one group, subgroup that's doing better or worse than another. We want all of the students to have the opportunity. So what I'd like to show is what we've done with chronic absenteeism. That has been one of the district goals for several years because we knew after that COVID experience, there was a different kind of thought about how you had to be here, how often you had to be here. And so we've been working really diligently on chronic absenteeism. So the high school level is, we've got a four for our students with disabilities, but we're all in chronic absenteeism level two. See we've got threes and other faces. So our goal was to get us out of chronically absent as much as we could and think about at risk or no risk. Whitney Point, so this is a whole school district, grades one through eight. We have the darker orange is twenty-twenty-two, the lighter orange is twenty-three. And I put in the middle the things that our district has been doing. So we've had attendance Olympics at the TRA, which was amazing and wonderful. And then we had attendance at the CEA to do the same kind of thing where we're trying to shift the narrative about something that maybe potentially could be seen as a negative and turn it into something good. So you can see this at the one-eight level and we can see it again at the nine-twelve level. We made a commitment to bringing down the chronic absenteeism rate and we've made progress. At the high school, we're talking about an attendance committee and really leaning into our student success centers. There's one at the TRA and there's one at the high school, but one of the things they're doing often is looking at these attendance rates beyond other data. Okay, so we know that we have to make improvements, right? Everyone needs to improve all the time. We talk to our students about that as a lifelong learner and that's how we're developing our professional development plan. We looked in the rearview mirror. These are the things we see. How do we determine what's moving forward? So in our district, we have September twenty-seventh, the tabletop drill half day. We had our emergency response teams working on those drills. At the same time, we had teachers who were able to connect in their professional learning communities and do that work. So you're not wasting a moment. You've got that time where people are using it. In October eleventh, we have a superintendent's conference day. We are offering some wellness things, so that's good. But then we're also pretty packed in terms of looking at the redundancy to sharpen our focus. So doing things in a recursive pattern where we're all feeling more comfortable and we're making gains. We also have the, it's not November, it's December, half days where we'd be doing the same thing, where there's elementary teachers who are doing conferences and then our secondary staff is working on this as well. Again, we follow through to the March Superintendent's Day where we're putting high impact practices and enduring structures into our curriculum and documents. But we know that working to better, working together is better than working alone. So we do have instructional specialists from BOSI's coming to work with a plethora of our teachers. Many of you know Val. Val is working K-five on literacy and our U-Flight programs and making some changes there. Paul Volker is working with our K-five math as we dig into Eureka Square. And then Libby Haller is helping with our four-eight science as we look to really utilize the third floor first team activities that are going to help our students do really well on the fifth and the eighth grade science test. And we have Jamie Mendelis meeting with our six through eight English teachers. It's a team that's kind of been shifting and changing because we've had some new people. And we're really hoping that we can get everybody on the same page and deciding some really cool things together. Another thing I wanted to mention was the fact that BOSI's offers, these communities of practice and most of us here at Whitney Point end up becoming a part of those community of practice. So you don't, you only, you don't just have the people of Whitney Point, but you're using people in school districts across the southern tier to be able to kind of look at where are you making improvements? What really worked with you? We're struggling with this. And so opening that language, not just from our school district, but moving on. I didn't scare you off. There's no data. There's no data. All right, so the PD plan, we have to do this every year to help us stay to help us go, continue on the path of growth, right? So professional development plan, and I'll be honest with you, I wish that we could provide way more fresh professional development than we do because we don't have substitutes. And trying to make the time in the day where teachers can get this and they're not taking away from either their students or from their own time. But we do a really great job of utilizing every minute that's already planned to tackle the things that we're talking about. So this professional development plan includes I need to make sure that I mentioned. We include our district goals in the professional development plan. And goal three is by June of twenty-twenty-five, we will increase the percentage of students meeting or exceeding proficiency on math and ELA assessments by implementing data-driven instructional strategies, providing targeted interventions, and enhancing professional development for teachers. So it's a district-level goal. I know our buildings are picking up on those goals as well, and we're trying to focus all of our energies at the same issue. We are using our PLC, professional learning communities and the language there. So they have a big three focus, which is focus on learning, focus on collaboration, focus on results. And the other four questions we're continuing to ask ourselves are, what do we want our students to know or do? How do we know they can do it? If they can't do it, what are we going to do? And if they can do it, what are we going to do? So taking those four questions and the three focuses and adding it to everything that we're doing as a district to kind of bring that collaborative motion together as we move forward. I wanted to mention, we did, we are a part of a RISE grant. It's reading intervention for student equity. BOSI's got the grant and then is working with our regional school districts to create a regional intervention system that will go beyond the grant where we're all using our resources together and materials together. We started it over the summer, lots of kids who wanted to tutor, which is really awesome. And now continuing into the fall, the grant has allowed us to have on staff another interventionist hired through the grant through BOSI's. And so we're able to look at our intervention schedule and really rearrange things because we didn't have that person before, and now we do. So that opens up a lot of opportunity for us. Then I just want to finish. I know it's very busy, but I just wanted to be able to say that twenty-twenty, March twenty-twenty was the historic upheaval of public education. Twenty-twenty-two, so it was the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. We were year one on our PLC journey, we created teams and began essential standard work. And then twenty-two, twenty-three was year two, and we started reviewing literacy programs. And we do that constantly, but we were doing a specific literacy review and piloted new curriculum. Twenty-three, twenty-four, so last year was year three. We implemented U-Flight the CA, we piloted Eureka Square, and we talked across grade levels about high-impact practices and establishing enduring structures from New York State. And then we're here for. So we continue our recurring standard formative assessment, data review, instructional changes cycle. That's what we're trying to stay on top of and redundant with. And return our focus to the four critical questions and the three big ideas. And then I wanted to end with a thank you and a picture. Our, one of our art teachers offers ceramics for our staff to do after school. And it's just amazing to see how, even though this is a really tough job and we put a lot in, people are still giving to each other. That's it.
One very kind of question.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Just because, and probably, I don't know, it's going to be someone of you guys. So I'm not a literacy teacher and I'm not a literacy specialist. Please, let me just teach technology. Science of reading is like this big monster push. So is U-Fly using the science of reading?
Well, science of reading is really just the idea that we're using research-backed programs. And so U-Fly is focusing on phonics instruction to give a clear, explicit phonics instruction.
Is that a port, right?
Yes.
Is that a port, right?
Yes. So the, so you may have seen that slide where there was a ton going on.
Right.
Have, we have been making very significant changes.
And I knew U-Fly was one of the big ones, yeah.
So U-Fly was the first piece. So literacy instruction is, is different pieces. It's the phonics instruction, so that's the skill so that you can read the code that makes up words, right? And you may know that for years we moved to, oh, there was a philosophy that moved somewhat away from that or the, away from the explicit instruction of phonics.
That's where the problems start.
Yes. And then, and then, so the other piece of it is, is the, like, the knowledge building. Because once you learn the code, you need to be able to have the vocabulary, have the understanding so that when you sound out a word, that word makes some sense to you, right? So that's the other piece of the curriculum. So like any change, it has to move slowly. So we, we first did a, she, she showed you there, we did a pilot of U-Fly first at the end of the year before last. We had a number of teachers work closely with the curriculum to figure out, all right, what are, what are we going to run to? What are we going to need support with? They did that, they did it at the tail end of the year before last. And then last year, the entire CEA implemented U-Fly for the core phonics instruction. And then we moved through the whole other piece of literacy. Like I said, that's that knowledge building and vocabulary. And, and it's also just learning. It's like you, you've been reading to learn because you're learning about the world and there's science and social studies and all sorts of things in that curriculum. And that's where we did a pilot at the end of last year, and they are implementing it the rest of this year. So the CEA has taken on both those things. The other thing that we found with math instruction is, some of you may remember this, that we moved to the Common Core. A lot of the elementary teachers had to get a ton of PD and support to, to learn how to teach math in this new way. But we've had a lot of change since then.
Right.
And, and so we found that, you know, people were just not prepared and they, and they were with colleagues who were really had, had been through and developed their own. They were really having a hard time and there was not consistent instruction from classroom to classroom. So we moved to a new curriculum, which is aligned to the work that we were doing before. But it's, it's pretty scripted so that you can walk in as a teacher and know what you're doing and, and, and everybody can be on the same page. And so we have a guaranteed and viable curriculum across classrooms instead of every teacher having to make everything up themselves. I mean, then they gridded the craft to it and their personality, but that, having those core things in place. So to address these things that you're seeing in these numbers, we've made some really significant changes. And now what we're doing is moving, we're starting with the fourth grade because now we've got kids in different places because they've just had this really explicit instruction. But it may be, you know, they've also had these gaps and where are they? So what's, what's the right thing that means doing fourth grade right now? That's what they're looking at, data collection right now and assessing. Although that may be having to, to move because hopefully next year's fourth graders are going to be in better shape than this year's fourth graders are. And, and, and so, so we're right now working really closely to figure out, as far as literacy instruction in particular, what are the things that we have to do for the next couple of years for the kids who are getting, you know, coming to this instruction a little bit later?
Right.
So Common Core, when everybody started different places and hit.
Yeah, yeah. So.
Well, I know at the TRA, you've changed some scheduling too, right? So the class, like, they're not all the same, like, every, you don't spend thirty-five minutes on this subject, thirty. Like, they have different time sets now for subjects so they can be more fluid.
And they also tried to align the schedules in the building this year. And they've also created an intervention block so their kids can get, you know, whatever it is they need. I mean, that's, people here could speak to that one person who teaches very much responsible for that.
I, I've been hearing some stuff that's, you know, from my students, so I was just curious. And they, they like what they're seeing, but I, I guess I didn't know that we had started doing that, that's.
And we, we were just a building that was like all on a different schedule. So it was kind of like people were all over the place. So in order to all be on the same schedule and kind of like as one big team and kind of fit things better into that, like, schedule. We're now on forty-minute, nine periods, but it also opened it up. So we have forty-minute lunches for all the kids. So they actually have time to do a recess all four through eight, which we didn't used to have. So we took away the electronics, but we gave back some time for them to socialize. So it also gave us a little bit of time to break up activity.
Yeah.
So break it up so to kind of keep some of the behaviors on too. So especially for like sixth and seventh grade, half of them are outside. And then half of them are in the cafeteria and then we get to flip-flop and things like that. So just finding new ways to kind of, you know, bring like the community. I'm, we're four through eight building, we're kind of unique, bringing us all together on the same schedule, but also finding ways to add some more time in. So it has been a little bit of getting used to, you know, we're trying to work with the elementary portion of it getting, they were asking for like dedicated ELA and math box. We were trying to give them more time in that. So we've just been working in different ways to make it work.
I've heard positive things, just so you know, but I was curious, you know, where did we decide to do this? How did we make this happen? So thank you for the.
So, so just, so each subject has a forty-minute block?
Yeah. Yes, but like elementary teachers still have the ability though to play around with that however they see. Their specials though are forty minutes, their lunch is forty minutes. So like, those are times when you can't kind of play around because the whole building's on that same schedule. But they still have time within their day to, you know, they don't have to stick to that forty minutes, but it kind of just is how, it's how it's going. You know, it's like, we do have forty-minute, it's nine periods a day.
I don't care if with a partner, we can just swap them. But my, my, my students are impressed, so I was just like, thank you for the explanation.
Yes, it's going to difference. Hope it works, give your management, never know.
So some songs that weren't in there and getting forced to get forty.
So and then, yeah, we, so you know that we, so we have not been departmentalized in elementary at all. But now, but now we have, we're going to have, you know, the science breakout that Andrea is going to do. So that, that will be new.
Yeah, just like they're quiet music.
So and then, and then the one other thing I wanted to say, and I know that you, you would, I know, you know, that some of you in particular really love to understand the metrics here. That was a really simple chart, but it's not, it's not simple at all. In fact, every category there, the metrics are, are different. So that, the one in that category is actually not the lowest five percent. In some categories, it's the lowest ten percent in the state. Sometimes it's when you don't meet a certain threshold. Sometimes it's when you score between this number and this number. And I can give you that information. It is dizzying to try and understand, but the thing, the takeaway though is one's not good.
Well, that's what I was going to get to. It doesn't matter, one is just ten percent, five percent, lowest, those are all bad terms.
Right. And I, and I'll give you a couple, you know, a couple of other things that we had, you know, in some interesting things about our district and not explain everything on the pandemic because we, that doesn't do us any good, but it is, there is some realities there. You know, we had, we had a higher percentage of, of people during the pandemic who stayed home the entire time, a year and a half. We had a higher, a, a higher percentage of, of people who are classified as economically disadvantaged households stay home the entire time, you know, for a variety of reasons. And, and, you know, developmentally for kids at some ages, that's, that's a really big deal. And, and then to, so to see that subgroup being a one is, you know, very concerning for us. And the attendance, even though we've improved, is, is still really bad. Like the, the, the shift in, in people's thinking from before the pandemic to, it's, it's amazing, our, our attendance rates. It's so dramatically different. I mean, and that is a big, big problem.
And, and our attendance, our graduation rate went down too, and that's part of it.
No, but I mean, I, I, I know that, I mean, that looks attendance. I mean, that, that is the first thing you have to start with because you have to change that mindset. And you can't teach if they're not here, I get it, and that's great. So that is a big thing. I know math usually is the thing that we've done well with and it's easier to teach. But, and it probably won't sound nice, but I mean, we're at twenty-twenty-four and some of those kids, the four years that we've lost, they're gone. Like, they're moving, four years has moved and those kids have moved four grades. And it's just, at some point, and I get it, and I know we're here, but it's frustrating because at some point, it's kind of like, that happened, now we got to go forward.
Right.
And so I, I like the idea. I mean, I like the idea of some of the literacy changes too because that, that pre-COVID, that wasn't going where it should have been going here.
Yeah. Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you to all the people doing all of it.
That brings us to the consent agenda. May I have a motion?
So.
Chris, and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, if you have to, you can say.
A appointment. Approve the appointment of Jeremy Gordon, bus driver effect of October fourth, twenty-twenty-four. May I have a motion? Thank you, Chris. And second.
Yay.
Yay.
Could I have a second please?
Second.
Thank you, Aubrey. Any questions or comments other than the resounding yea? Or in addition to the resounding yea? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the appointment of Frederick Underwood, cleaner effect of October seventh, twenty-twenty-four. May I have a motion?
So.
Thank you, Tom. And a second. Second. You, Chris. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the appointment of Colleen Jandrew, part-time food service helper effective October ninth, twenty-twenty-four. May I have a motion? Thank you, Chris. And a second. Aubrey. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the appointment of Amber Thompson, full-time teacher's aide effective October ninth. Excuse me, twenty-twenty-four. Thank you, Molly.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the appointment of Hannah Pendle, elementary education teacher in the elementary education teacher tenure area effective October ninth, twenty-twenty-four. May I have a motion? Thank you, Chris. And a second.
Second.
Thank you, Aubrey. Any questions or comments? I wish you're all the best.
You may have noticed that you don't have quite the mouthful to read these anymore.
I appreciate that.
The APPR rules changed, so you don't have, you don't have to have all that.
Because I always felt because it had the APPR rules in there that we had to like really official and, and need it all. And I, I do appreciate.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? But excuse me, please, for continuing to yawn. You have in front of you the extracurricular activity advisors. Is it just the positions that are asterisk that are sharing the Stipe pend? Or is it like destination DC? Are they sharing the Stipe pend or do they each have their own?
They have their own.
Okay.
It's on the asterisk.
Yep. Okay, just wanted to. Okay. May I have a motion, please? Thank you, Chris. And a second.
Okay.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Any opposed? Any abstain? Donation, um, accept the donation of a Photon four three D printer from Mr. Norm Troyke of Troy. Knowledge, Lee, sorry if I totally messed that one up. Um, may I have a motion? Thank you, Chris. And a second. Any questions or comments?
Thank you.
He's donated before to the school and he come across them, so yeah, very nice guy.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Application refund of real property taxes, um, pursuant to section five five four of the New York State real property tax laws. The total warrant changes are seven thousand four hundred thirty-nine dollars and fifty-two cents. They have a motion? Thank you, Chris. And a second. Thank you, Tom. Any questions or comments?
Why was there a star by the opportunities functioning in the document? Is that just something odd?
Well, no, it was a clerk lawyer, the assessor and all that, everything on the bill. So again, those things happen. We allocate our budget, uh, a small amount for those types of things. So this is still within our allotment for potential, uh, refunds. They don't get too many more, but yeah, that's an interesting one. Can we build back the assessor that goes? I mean, that's kind of the problem, right? So we have our tax levy that we spread out amongst the whole district. We develop the tax rates, we set the bills and then all of a sudden, two months later, oh whoops, this uh, tax parcel you're expecting seven thousand from, you're not gonna get. But that's why again, you could put a little allowance in the budget, um, it's twelve thousand five hundred. Uh, we haven't exceeded that since I've been here. That's a big one.
Yes, that's a nonprofit, right?
Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? We need to approve the information technology corrective action plan addressing June twenty twenty-four information technology audit report. Two zero two three M dash one seven nine by the New York State Comptroller's Office. Make a motion? Chris, and a second. Aubrey, any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain?
Chris, you're up. Hey, I don't know if you'd have some, this was in front of you or looked at them, but there are, and I'll go very quick, um, but there is a couple, um, that are a little concerning. And again, for Aubrey, I am your voting representative. Thursday night, I will sit. Last year we were online from four o'clock till midnight. So voting on things, but, um, if you didn't have a chance, one of the ones that they're concerned about is proposed resolution number four. And that is a resolution where they're trying to help with the, um, retirement situation. So tier one through tier four has always been a very valuable, um, retirement area to be in, but tier five and tier six are causing some issues. And they want to make changes. Additionally, they want to change the longevity piece, which I did ask Zach to look at what would happen to us. Zach discovered we would three point two tax increase. Minimally, right?
Well, again, it wouldn't be an increase, but that'd be the amount of money that we would have to.
Yeah.
It wouldn't be a tax.
Right, no, but so it's, it's, but what's happening is, as Joanne willing, then we need to incentivize teachers. They need to have better retirement. However, they've come up with this without doing real deep research within the school districts. One school district saying that their increase would be almost six billion dollars a year. So.
It's retirement incentives is what it is.
It's changing it so that, that everybody will then be back to tier four. And so we have to pay in to get them to tier four when they're actually at tier six.
So basically the, um, with the legislation of coming up with tier five, tier six, certain provisions of tier four, you won't pay in for, till you're like vested, ten years, you're done. Uh, tier five, tier six, uh, well, tier six, I'll speak of that because I know that one a little better. You pay for that as long as you're working. And it used to be, no matter how much you made, you only paid three percent of your contribution to the retirement system. After, um, tier six, there's actually, you can pay up to six percent, but that's again, the whole working career of that person. So what they're proposing or they're, are saying is, can we go back to where the tier four provision was? Cap it at, uh, ten years, three percent. What would that look like? So what we had to do payroll CBO was they ran a report, because again, this really took place in two thousand and twelve. Um, so now we have about twelve years of, since then, any new person, state system is either a tier five to tier six. If they all went back to the tier four, um, what happened is they're paying more of their portion of pension. Whether it's GRS, TRS, whatever. So we brought back to that, uh, legislation, which again, I know a lot of people personally would like to see that are in tier five or tier six. That's how much it would cost additionally to the district, so.
District have to pick up that.
You'd have to pick up.
It was still pension cost, but right now the employees paying more. Tier five and six had, there's, you can't, there was no fifty-five and thirty years or that was like. Yeah, so that's another thing that you just, you can't get out. But, you know, I think that's, as it's been now, a place of twelve years, I think you see more legislators being impacted by it. It is becoming more of a topic. Last year they, uh, said again, to be vested, you had to be like, you had to be ten years. Last year they moved that to back down to five. So it's like every year they're, they're chiseling little pieces of that away. Because they're not in office long enough to catch the end of all how this all goes through. I know how it works. It just, you, you, you do, you dole out the candy and then you leave. They're grandparents.
So basically what, um, our posties group has asked, and Randy's the one that's sort of spirit, I think Randy's really good at stuff like this. He's asked Nick, Matisse and myself to ask to pull this to committee and not have a vote on it and ask for a committee to be gathered to start researching it in a more deeper fashion instead of just saying, okay, here.
You need jerk. You don't want to need jerk because people need jerk and then we're all.
So I wouldn't be voting for us yes or no. Instead I would be voicing opinion to not have it go forward yet until a committee does more research on. As.
I think that's reasonable.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
So that, that was one. Um, proposed resolution, um, seven, for the most part, the committee believed like if they were saying support, we were support. It was about employee exams, making sure there's more access to employees to have exams. Makes sense, so they can get jobs. Um, let's see, there was a couple more that were just, I'm like, I'm just gonna fly. Okay. This one, not everyone agreed on. The New York State Board Association supports less, legislation at the state level that will allow school districts whose pre-kindergarten programs are oversubscribed to show enrollment preference to students who are economically demand disadvantaged or are English language learners until such time as the program's become, become truly universal. It was last year. It got voted down. They're pushing it again and they do support it. But there are people that don't support it, so I don't know how we vote. How do we vote?
Wasn't it like that originally when we first started UPK that we had to have a certain number of students who were, you know, our, one of our partners does. We have that, uh, uh, but for ours, the opposite, it was lottery. So you could get, you could have people who really, really needed it and they, if they didn't get it in. I mean, you know, and it was just like, it was ra- it was essentially random. So there are a lot of people who feel like, you know, some people can pay for a, a pre-K experience or a nursery for a school experience if it's not universal.
Unless people can't, even if there are people in this economy can't.
Well, we don't, I mean, we don't have this issue because we do have a full program.
But so wait, so we have to go back to the root cause of this is that we looked ahead and knew that this is where we should go. These are people that didn't put the money there where they should have before, and now they're being oversubscribed. So it goes back to they should have done and got the grants and did the things that they should have done. So this is a bandaid going back.
And also with the influx of so many, uh, illegal immigrants into our states, they're clearly gonna have preference. If it's, if it's, if they're, if, if there's a preference for non-English speaking students, they're gonna have that preference. So.
So basically if we vote yes and this becomes a law, then we would have to do this.
I'm gonna interrupt for just a second. Do we have students here?
Yes, that would be good. Alan, I'm sorry to interrupt. I, I had spoken to them and said at eight thirty, I mean, they.
Yeah, if you guys want to bring up your forms right now, any one of us can sign. Please make sure your name is on there before we sign it though. Um, we don't blame you. Yeah, and I. It's okay. No, that's, that's exactly why we're letting you guys go. Board of Education, name and charges. And then give them state these phone number. Six oh seven, six nine two, eight two. Yeah.
E two O two, that's a perfect.
Yeah.
What is it?
E two O two.
Have a good night. Drive home carefully, you guys. I'm sorry.
So I just looked at the time and it's not an issue for our district because our, we, we have enough spots. I mean, I, maybe if we had a ton of people come out for three-year-olds, we could potentially have that issue, but, um, we don't.
If you were in a district that had this issue, would you want to vote yes or no?
And the only other thing I would add to what Tom said was that, um, our grants were competitive grants, so people did apply and didn't get them.
Right.
So not everybody's been able to access what we access.
They still could have put it in the capital budgets.
But well, definitely that's true.
Instead of building things that they built and, I mean, I know, because we've discussed in the past that some schools did things in.
So basically what they're saying is that if they're oversubscribed, that at that point they will have to give it to the economically disadvantaged or ELA winners first.
So again, like, so when we were, we were, didn't have all the slots that you had before we got the competitive grants, we had to have a lottery. So some people didn't get it and there were people who said, how is that fair? This family has no means and this family has.
Right.
So that's, you know, that's. You'd prioritize the people who really can't afford it, although it's expensive for anybody.
There aren't as many, there aren't as many places that are alternatives anymore either.
Right. New York State School Board Association does support this, just so you're aware of that. Want me to vote yes or no?
I'm still saying that.
I've dead by my cash. I'm very strong on both sides.
Yeah, exactly. That's, that's my quandary. It's like, we were, well, my girls were, you know, in pre-K before we had pre-K and so we did pay for it.
Yeah, I paid for it.
I mean, so often many people fall into the working for class where they don't meet that criteria. They can't afford it. And then they can't afford to actually pay for.
Right, so.
So that would be unfair to them as well. So it's, it's, it's not.
No, I, I know. I just, I, I, I see, I see, I see the each point. Um, I see that they're trying to make sure that it is available to students who really need it, but I also see that lottery is fair. I would say no, because I think there's better ways to go about this, but that's just my. Then I say, oh no. One, two, two no's.
If it worked the way it was supposed to, I would say yes, but there's a lot of things that, all of these things that are set up to help.
And more than one vote out of four hundred. Okay, most likely no. Sorry, guys. Okay, keep going. Um, they are doing the New York swims program. You, you'll listen, Joanne? Yeah. Can we get money back for our pool that we just put in? Darn.
It's not in.
Well, yeah, it's an initiative to take care of and aid schools to make sure that we're making the disadvantage can have swimming programs. I'm like, wait a minute. So I'll vote yes for that, but boy, can't we get reimbursed first? Um, then, um, the New York State School Board Association supports legislation at the state level to allow school districts to provide an opt-out declaration to transportation services. New, NISBA is opposed to this one. So, and I don't know, Zach might understand the opt-out better than I do, but, um, more Joanne, but the opt-out has something to do with if students don't want to ride the bus, like you have to have so much money per child, a seat on the bus or something like that. And if a student's family says we're not gonna ride the bus, then we shouldn't have to be paying for that student to be on the bus.
Oh, definitely no.
I thought it had to do with our aid, transportation aid.
Yeah, it's got to do with it, yeah.
Get impacted negatively if you report the fact that all the people are not riding the bus.
Right, yeah, right. So that's my understanding.
So with that was a way that if you're not riding, you make your taxes go down because you're not taking that benefit. Is that what you just said? You said that they'd have to pay.
Maintain all current transportation services for children who require it while recognizing that families constantly choose not to utilize the bus and services. So we oppose it. Everybody opposes it. So I'm. Okay, so that's good. You guys are okay with opposing now? What was the other one? There was one too far. Yeah, I'm going fast. New York State School Board oppose a proper, proposed amendment of the commissioner related to mixed competition and extra class athletic activities. They are opposing it because they felt the wording was not appropriate. It was fostering equity and inclusivity with school sports and programs. But for, it's adversely, adversely affecting female athletes, especially in the way they have it worded. So they are posing it because the wording is not correct. They don't want it to happen the way that wording is.
Well, if that's what they're gonna hang their hat on, I'd be against it too.
Yeah. Now, this one you'll, you'll like. This one is oppose, resolve that New York State Board Association oppose efforts to establish additional school closure holidays without commencement adjustment to school calendars. They are opposed it and it makes sense to be opposed it because we've been so many school holidays. But just so you know, it's on the docket. So I'll probably vote no, right? Okay. So this one is opposed to, to, um, men, um, to not, it's advocates for minimization of field testing in school districts, making the rights to refuse to participate in field testing without penalty from New York State Education Department.
Field testing of what?
Yeah, state, state exams. They send out field. So not only do kids have to take a state assessment, they also have to do field tests, which are like, um, like we test the market with, with tests. So they have some sample questions and they want to see how kids do. So that ends up more testing for kids and more responsibility for the school.
No.
So some schools are like, please, just leave us, but you get penalized if you don't.
Right. So this is an odd one because NISBA is opposing it, but people are actually for it. A lot of schools are for it. They don't want this field testing to keep going on. It may all change with the Blue Ridge, Red Moon Commission. I have no idea. So.
Oh, whichever way means that we're not gonna keep doing more testing.
I mean, it's, it's, I mean, but you have to know, want them to have test, say, questions that go out that they ha- that are not good questions.
They used to do that after the fact and throw things out afterwards.
What was that? The pineapple question?
But that's, I mean, that's what they, you know, that's. But that's, I mean, that's what they, you know, that's why they field test is to.
So.
Give them a test run.
There are some that are not recommended for resolution, but they'll still come up for vote. This is what takes forever. And one is about the region's exam testing, state final exams to comply with ESA, Every Student Succeed Act. On one exam, so they are opposing this because they want the Blue Ribbon Commission to finish their work.
Which makes sense.
Um. Advocate for the repeal of the. Removal of the religious and moral exemption to immunizations that is being posed. But it almost passed last time, even though it was opposed by Nisba. So there is a big cohort that wants.
What almost passed? The medical?
To reverse it.
Mm-hmm.
To put it back in, again.
Yeah.
On the way it was supposed to or not.
Resolve the New York State Board Association advocate for the repeal of the twenty nineteen law that removed the religious and moral exemption for immunizations. You know.
Said if it was done and it was based on what it's supposed to be based on. I have no problem with it, but it's another loophole that people not use religious and then just do something different. It's just terrible.
They want it totally removed, basically. So it's being opposed. If you guys want me to vote yes, let me know.
I mean, my understanding is the reason that they changed it in twenty nineteen is because they had those outbreaks downstate.
Yes.
You know, we not necessarily kind of the issue here, you know?
And this is coming from downstate, too.
And and. The point of immunizations is to make it so that. You don't have the outbreaks, and there have been a lot of diseases that immunizations have eradicated. But are now again raising their heads because people aren't getting immunized.
There's also controversy about the current immunization, so they're not the same as the ones we received.
Well, yeah, exactly, and that's that's where.
That's where people start to.
That's where the conundrum is. It's like that. That's the intention of of everybody getting.
But then if you're uncomfortable, you don't jump on the religious reason. That's what I'm saying, but that's how that.
So would you like me to vote yes or?
I don't know how.
Tell me. Would you like it to be taken back so that they could use religious religions, or you wanna leave it as it is?
I I believe in it.
I too. They were doing it as religious, but I'm gonna vote no, because people aren't using it that way.
Uh, yeah, I agree. Okay, so we have two no's, we have two, we got two yeses and two no's. I guess I'm a deciding vote. I would vote yes on this, actually. Oh, well, okay, we got a yes for that one.
Easy if they were all straight.
Okay. Okay, so this one is opposed, and I think we all would want it to stay that way, but um oppose any legislation or. NICE ed regulation mandating comprehensive K twelve gender and sexuality education. So it is being opposed. They believe it should say no, and that school district should be able to have their own decisions. Okay. Okay. Um, the New York City School Board Association opposes legislation for NICE ed regulation that would allow biological males to participate in female athletes. This female athletics, this again is being opposed and being opposed. Because of wording and the wording is not appropriate for it to be done the way it is.
Again, so they're gonna hang their hat on that that way, but that's.
So there's not opposed to the concept, but how it's presented.
Yes.
That's what they're saying.
Opposed to the concept.
But but right now, we can vote no no matter what.
You see, that's the way it is, so it gets everything.
Okay.
Do we have a lot more?
Nope, we just got a couple more, sorry.
That just.
This one wasn't unable to reach a decision, so this one's gonna be kinda crazy when it's voted on. New York State Board Association advocates for thirty to forty minutes per day of recess time being officially recognized. As alternative form of instructional time in elementary schools. And counted towards mandated minutes. Schools then can allocate adequate time for recess each day. To ensure that social and emotional well-being and the whole child development of their students. This is um Nisba has been unable to reach a position, so this one is going to be a very interesting vote, so.
I'm hundred percent behind recess, but I'm just, I don't like the state telling us every every freaking minute of the day, we have, they have to.
They have to.
I mean, it's ridiculous.
Every minute of the day is being accounted for, as Joanne, so.
It's ridiculous, but there should be some flexibility.
Well, this would allow the recess to be counted as instructional time. So, but this would be allowing the recess to be counted as instructional time. So that they can use it as social, emotional, well-being time for education.
So right now, we have to we have to submit how many minutes, how many instructional minutes we have for every day for every school, and you can't count recess.
No.
You should. Recess is recess.
How do you feel about?
That's like double.
And he's gonna find minutes on recess.
Yeah, I still think it should be counting. I think it's, I my, I would vote yes if I was me. I don't know what you guys.
Oh, you're gonna vote, but I said no.
I say, yes, they're learning.
They're learning.
Yeah.
They're learning to be fools with people.
They learn on the bus. Do you count on your own bus?
Though, I mean, too, right? I mean, if we are doing recess, then.
Some schools don't have recess every day. My students that come here are shocked at how much time our kids get in the gymnasium and recess. Because they don't get it in other schools that they're at, which I disagree.
But I mean, seriously, if you're getting on the bus, you learn how to get on and things with people.
And probably no one knows until this, but I'm just thinking if it's going to be counted as instructional minutes, will it have to be a structured recess where you have to be doing this?
It's not what it says here. It says it's just, yeah, right. It says it's a break where children can have fun and do so. Not here.
That's just one, though.
Yeah. Okay, I think that's the last one, but that was the one that was the most interesting, I thought.
I agree, that one was interesting.
Do you want me to vote yes?
No.
I'm yes.
I'm a no.
I mean, I kind of, I'm now I'm thinking a different way. What 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 it could lead to, like what what comes, like.
Well, this one doesn't say what Tom is saying. It's saying it's gonna be recess time, so. But anyhow.
For slippery stalls.
Yeah, I see what he's saying.
I'm abstaining on this one because I I can't.
Okay, I can't, I mean, I can't. I'll just wing it. I'll, you know, paper scissors.
I am all for recess, and I think that.
What do what do our principals want?
Is it like a bit in the trap?
Yeah, right.
I mean, I think getting them out and socializing more because they don't get a chance to always do that now. Um, I think getting them outside and interacting with each other as much as possible, I'm for it.
Hey, I'm for it, too.
Yeah.
It happens at primary level regardless, like it's it's part of every child's day every day, so it's happening already.
That doesn't help schools, Tom. You gotta understand this.
But they're wrong. Why don't they not?
So this would be encouraging all schools to, yes.
Why do you encourage people to do the things they're supposed to be doing anyway?
In in that case, I will say yes, because I do think that kids, all kids deserve to have a break. And a lot of times, once they have that break and they can do the socialization and. And have downtime from learning, they can go back and be more prepared for learning than when it's like.
I I just, I I am shocked that school districts that don't have recess built into their.
I can't believe the state hasn't said they have to have it.
No, they don't have to have it every day, and they don't have to have gym every day or physical education, sorry, but so that, right? Anyhow, is that the last one? That's it, guys. I'll do my best.
Thanks. Have fun. Drink lots of coffee.
Great bakers.
Okay, but now texting all of us at midnight now, because you're bored, okay? Um, approve the agreement between the superintendent of schools and the assistant superintendent. May I have a motion soon? Chris, second. Aubrey. All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Um, that brings us to our second opportunity for comments from the public.
Yay, yay. Okay, audience is.
Oh, wait, no, I skipped.
I don't know why they wouldn't leave.
I'm sorry, I'm having a really hard time here with this not being.
No, that's right. You're right.
Oh, you've got superintendent stuff.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, and I didn't mean to skip that, so go right ahead.
Um. Can we let people go home?
Yeah, yeah. Oh, they can definitely go home. You're fine.
Yeah, great. It's really good, because we still have board goals. Go up. You gotta get up early.
We're gonna talk about you soon, Charlie.
Oh, sorry. So I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna tell you a couple things. Um. One, there's a lot happening in state right now, lots and lots and lots, a lot of movement in a lot of areas, very unusual for state. And the Board of Regents to be moving quickly on things, but they definitely are. Um, you heard Christmas mention the Blue Ribbon Channel, um, the November Board of Regents meeting, they're gonna be uh talking about their timeline for changes. Um, they're proposing very dramatic changes to graduation requirements, and it sounds like they're looking to move quickly on this.
I can send some stuff to Stacy's, or you've got.
Yeah, I got, yeah, so but I'm just, but the timeline is the key, and so at the November Board of Regents, we'll hear more about that, and that'll be. Very interesting and have a lot of implications for schools. Second thing is that um you may have heard that the the governor, remember last year, their their foundation aid formula, she was good and all that stuff. So she's got the Rockefeller Institute coming up, the they're doing a study, and they're gonna issue a report by no end of uh November, by December first, she's gonna. Accept that report and use it to inform what she's gonna propose in her budget next year. There's a lot of concern about what's gonna happen with that.
But that one benefited us, but not most of our.
Well, what happened was she was going, she was gonna do some things to the foundation aid formula that hurt some districts, particularly those who have lost enrollment. And her point, and it's related to the next thing that I'm gonna say, is that essentially she's saying enrollment in New York State is going down. But the costs of education keep going up, and that it's something's gotta get here. And so um, but the problem is, like we discussed, is that you can lose some students, but you still have to have all the programs, all the teachers, all the.
Right.
So maybe we need to lose some of the regulations.
Well, right, I mean, New York State does have more regulations.
It creates jobs for cheap people.
So um, so related to that, she's also um requiring that we have do this regionalization study. And every school district has to uh do uh like a comprehensive review of the last ten years of all of our. Data, performance data, uh all all the things that we offer, all of our expenditures. Um, for the last ten years, we have to have that submitted submitted to, um, and then we also do like a strengths and weaknesses assessment of our own district. That has to go to to our BT BOCs, and then as a as a BT BOCs in the month of November, we need to put together like a regional plan. For regionalization. And so um, so these things are connected.
That's what that means.
Yeah.
So, so that's that's so, and they're they're proposing that there's gonna be ten-year cycles of regionalization, and that every area has to come up with ways that they're gonna. Share services more. Um, which is connected to this whole enrollment issue, and because because what they're saying is that. It's not sustainable to have every district everywhere replicating the same thing over and over. So that's, so that.
These are the towns, counties.
Yeah, so it's.
Yeah.
Um, so it's different than in the past. You may you may remember that some other districts have looked at merging, and that there's some, there's financial incentives for districts to do that. Um, this is different, like they, like we're required to come up with some kind of regionalization. Um, each of these cycles, so that this, there's gonna be, you know, lots of conversation in the next couple months. Um, they'll be sharing information about that. Um, uh, it does sound like the that they are listening to districts about, you know, what the realities are for costs, like in particular about. That how very expensive it is to have high-need students with disabilities. Um, and that we really are not compensated appropriately for that, and um. But like, as I said, still, there's a lot of concern about what's gonna happen with this foundation.
And there was a resolution here, didn't we, but it's it's against the Blue Ribbon Commission and stop making them tell us what to do, so we are opposing it.
We ever do anything positive?
No, I'm serious.
Do they, or just to try to make things?
Well, I mean, it's, I mean, like, so there are, uh, costs do go up, so I mean, I get that piece of it, you know, I mean, I, the the problem is that, you, as you know, you're a school board, that. In New York State, culturally, it's very, very important to communities to have their homeschools. And have their homeschools be the best they can be and offer things and.
Not that it'd be one big state school.
Right. And, you know, there there's transportation issues, there's all sorts of uh issues, you know, especially in rural areas, so um.
So our our district is so wide geographically, and now we're gonna combine with somebody else, and how?
Well, I mean, I think.
I mean, it just, you know.
I think that we will have to take some baby steps, you know, I mean, which is not, you know, there's there's ways that we can, we could benefit from. I mean, we do, you know, we have kids that go to marathon, you know, or, I mean, there are ways that we could probably share some things. Um, so, but then it'll be interesting.
Yeah.
Very shared, originally. It's called BOCs.
Yeah.
So we do have an opposition to that one. We have oppositions for electric buses, too, just so you know that, Zach, but um. Joanne, are you done?
Yeah.
There's one question. I had one more that I'd have to, you guys had to help me, because there's no position. Do we want to urge NICE to rescind unnecessary early dismissal mandates?
There's only one.
There's only one required. It said, New York State School Board Association urges NICE to rescind unnecessary early dismissal mandates.
When you're required to have one, I mean, I don't know, it's that big of a deal, so.
Is that an emergency thing?
Yeah, you have to like practice early.
Okay.
So it doesn't, it doesn't matter. Okay, thanks. There's no position. I don't know. I, give me a break. Okay, sorry about that.
All right. Okay, um, so we don't have anybody here from the public to speak, so we're okay with that.
Sure, Molly does wanna speak?
I'm pretty sure she does. She already said no before when I skipped over to Joanne. Um, board goals.
Um, no, we didn't get any feedback from anybody. These are the ones we wrote. They all sort of matched what we were doing. We made the changes from what Zach and people had recommended.
And if we have to tweak them during the year because they're not quite right, we can, so let's get them in the.
Yeah, so I I'm.
Super valid.
I don't think anything or any of them are hard, except maybe we're gonna have some struggle with these exits or anything. Yeah, I don't think any of them are gonna be overwhelming for us, so I think it's a good start for us.
Yep. You guys all agree?
Yep.
I like the first three. I guess I was a little. Last two, I.
The last.
Especially the last one, I was kinda confused.
The last one about um. Uh, school board will help build a collective collaborative environment. Is that the one? Um, collaborative environment where all members work to demonstrate ethical commitment to the BLA position. By operating with a conscious role models, exhibiting professionalism, exercising the authority only as a board of the whole. Recognizing that no individual board member has authority to take individual action on behalf of the board. That's.
I just don't see that as a goal. I mean, that's just an agreement that we need not.
Yeah.
Take individual action, you know what I'm saying?
Right, it was, if you look at the board, like the thing, that was one of them, and we scored a little low on it. Because you weren't hearing that during the retreat. This was one that we scored a little low on, the the board members didn't feel that we were consistently. Supporting each other and always on the same page as we should be, letting individual voices, but also being a collective environment. So it was one that scored lower, so that's why we put it there.
I have a lot of board members, too, so.
By voting on ourselves by this year. And we're gonna try, we're gonna do biannual and annual self-assessment, so we've never done a biannual self-assessment of ourselves to see if we are. Working together.
And then the one immediately before that, I guess I was just confused, because I think it was a couple things together.
It is, two of them.
So I was just confused about.
Um, this one was just really a straightforward, this arena, we scored the highest in. So really, all I did was take what was there and said we're gonna keep doing it. It was all fiscal responsibility that that does for us. So that's all I did, ensuring that it continues and.
So something you've already done, right on my to-do list.
Right, and they asked.
Right away.
Yeah, and they asked me to make it two, because one was the promotion of health and safety conditions. And that's a little bit harder to do, but like what we just did, this code of Honda is health and safety, did wellness thing, they're all part of that. they're all part of that, so that's why we separated those two. Because one was the fiscal responsibility and one was the health and wellness.
Right, is this where the exit service?
No, no.
No, oh, okay. I'm sorry. I don't have it in front of me, so it wasn't.
Nope.
Okay.
Yeah, so we just kept it clean and easy, because that was an area we scored very high on. Thanks, Molly.
And, you know, as I said, if we find we need to tweak some of them as we go through the year, we certainly can, but at least now we have something to start with.
Right, yeah, so they'll get it put in the system, and we can even start adding stuff now, so we'll enjoy.
Thank you.
Yay, done.
Do we have a need for an executive?
No, but you do have a need to um take a nice look at the art of it.
I have been, it's beautiful. My heart is drawn to all the colorful ones over there, because, you know, there's the rainbow colors and but they're all really, I like us. And, and I really enjoy that we continue to do this.
No.
Okay. Could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting at nine P M?
So.
Chris, and who wants to be the next one? But, thank you, Aubrey. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Thank you.
Thank you.
Are, are the numbers from modified something that I?
I didn't have, I don't know.